Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabad House of Delmar, together with my co-host, Mark Varnic, at Statewide News Service, JbizTechFelly.com, and now columnist for the Jewish Press.
And I'm having fun with all three assignments. And in my Jewish press column, it's called Albany Beat, I talk about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. Well, someone who does relate to the Jewish community is Judge Crasher, our Albany Common Councilman, our guest today. Welcome to The Jewish View.
Thanks for having me on, my first time. I'm excited.
You know, Mark, he was actually the emcee, or the keynote address at the Friendship Circle, you talk about the Jewish community, which is Friendship Circle is really, it's a national organization, but locally, that, you know, a lot of learning disabled, or Down Syndrome children, that they don't have friends, you know, a regular kid, and you're able to play baseball, and they don't play baseball, and they don't have friends. And you have volunteers, just not Jewish actually, or not religious, but just volunteer high school kids, volunteers to be their friend, hence the name Friendship Circle. So obviously, it's good for these, the learning disabled kids. And number two, which people don't talk about that much, but it's equally as important, you know, high school, oh, what's the latest movie star, et cetera, that's the big thing on their mind. And here, hey, you're helping someone out, and they come out saying that that was the most important thing they did through their high school years.
It's a wonderful organization.
And it also gives a respite for the parents for about an hour or so. And that's very important, too, so that parents could...
Yeah, they do amazing work over there. It's really just an asset to the whole community.
So this is great, I'm glad that...
I'm excited, I'm excited to be here.
You know, when we have someone on for the first time, I want the audience to get to know who the person is. So tell us about your background, tell us, you grew up in Albany?
Yeah, I was born in Albany in 1988, so I know I'm very old.
Well, I'm 29.
That was, alright, you got me beat, alright. So yes, I was born in Albany, then we moved, my family and I, we moved out into the hill towns of Albany County, which is where I graduated high school, and then moved back...
The hill towns?
Yeah, the hill...
BKW?
BKW, that's right, graduated from BKW for high school. And then moved back to the city of Albany for college, went to SUNY Albany, graduated there in 2010 with my bachelor's in political science, what a surprise. And from there, I worked in the state assembly, interned for now former Assemblywoman Joan Millman, who represented a part of Brooklyn.
Red Hook area?
Red Ho— yes, also Dumbo, Brooklyn Heights, wonderful woman.
Yes, I know her well. A Jewish legislator.
Yeah, just wonderful.
You worked, everything in connection with you is Jewish somewhere. You worked at Living Resources, Fred Erlich, a Jewish-owned business, you worked at Jeff Klein, Jewish legislator in the Senate.
Worked in the Speaker's Office.
Speaker's Office, under Silver. What was that like? Tell us about Shelley.
I mean, I had minimal contact with Shelley, I had most of my contact was, my direct supervisor was Judy Rapfogel, actually. And Judy is, was a very, very tough boss.
Yes, she wants it yesterday.
She wants it yesterday, that's right. If you didn't know that it was due yesterday, then that's your problem.
Everyone's aligned with her, yeah.
Absolutely. But obviously, we know what happened with the now former speaker. But it certainly was, to be in the leadership's office in the assembly and in the Senate with Jeff Klein, it was just two fascinating experiences, getting sort of a really inside look to see how the state legislative process works.
And then you also were a researcher and treasurer for DAC, the Democratic Assembly Campaign Committee. So you know about numbers, you know how to balance budgets, you know how to deal with...
Yeah, we had a significant campaign budget over at DAC.
How much?
Easily $2-3 million that we were operating with to, you know, aid the Assembly Democratic Caucus. So working with the executive director over there, making sure that all Ts were crossed and their Is were dotted, campaign finance reports were filed on time, you know, so forth. Again, another fascinating experience. Then in 2013, I ran for council, won, obviously, and took office in 2014, and here we are today.
Right, okay. So with your experience with numbers, you know, tell us about the city budget. And when the mayor proposes a budget, and the council's supposed to dispose of it, you know, it seems like it comes out of the council the same way it came in. It doesn't seem like it changes much.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, you know, the common council, unfortunately...
Why aren't you doing your job, then?
I know, no, I know, I know. The common council has a long history, before Kathy Sheen became mayor, of rubber stamping whatever the mayor wants. And that's disappointing, because I think it's a disservice to taxpayers, I think it's a disservice to small-d democracy. But what we have seen in the current administration is budget after budget being deeply flawed. There's no question that the current mayor, Mayor Sheen, walked into a real financial problem, that she can, could have, back in when she first took office, reasonably argued that this was the fault of the prior work by Mayor Jennings. But now, being so deep into her term, and now that she has several budgets under her belt, she's taken a bad problem and made it tremendously worse. And you can go down the list, $5 million of selling property in Queensland, so far we've gotten zero of that. Budgeting $2 million last year for red light cameras, we've received zero from that.
Why, why is that? I remember when they put them in, they said, "Oh, we're gonna make a win for them."
I'm gonna write the list.
And then we'll guess, alright, we'll do it.
I don't want to lose this train of thought.
$1.9 million for red light cameras for this year, and the projections that we've seen so far is that we're going to get another goose egg for red light cameras this year. So there's $3.9 million over a two-year period for red light cameras. Then you're talking about overtime, that was supposed to go down under this administration. It's about $1 million if you look at the fire department. Then you're looking at this new trash fee, that is imposed only on units of two, three, or four properties in the city of Albany.
No, two, three, or four residential...
Oh, yes.
Not two, three, or four properties?
No, two, three, units.
Family, units.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly. And from what we can gather, so far, the budgeted amount was $1.5 million, and we're on pace to actually get half of that.
At least you're getting half.
At least you're getting half this time, instead of, yeah, that's better than zero.
Like a goose egg.
Yeah, exactly. So when you look at that, those are just some examples, the mayor really can't use that argument anymore, that she was handed a dealt a bad hand, she was, and she took that hand, and she made it significantly worse.
But she could at least say she tried.
She tried, but there's, she did a really poor job at trying, and that's evidenced by the numbers.
But the council let her try.
The council let her?
Let her try.
Yes, they did. And as you mentioned, each budget that she has proposed so far, there have been no amendments made. Now, there are restrictions that we have, that are imposed on the council by the city charter, as far as what we can change, but certainly, there are expenditures that we can decrease, revenue items we can increase, and just providing that necessary oversight function, we continually don't do that, at least the majority of the council doesn't do that. There's a small group of us on the council, has the audacity to ask questions, has the audacity to try to get more information out of the mayor's office, has the audacity to vote, no. It's a small group, and it's not a majority, so we are in effect...
How many are on the common council?
Fifteen, fifteen.
And how many have the audacity to push back?
On a good night, four or five, yeah.
Okay, so it's Commisso, Robinson, Crasher, Bailey.
And on occasion, Mike O'Brien.
Mike O'Brien on occasion, Jack Flynn is totally in the mayor's...
Jack, you know, he's a very good man, he is a cautious guy, often though, he is voting with the mayor's majority.
Okay.
Even though...
He holds his nose when he votes.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
You know, Mark, I'll go through the list, because I have a lot of questions myself.
Okay, so now, Queensland, that was supposed to be when the landfill in Albany filled up, they were gonna use that...
Yes, as another landfill.
Landfill, but then the DEC didn't like that idea, so that's why, there's a reason why that didn't go anywhere.
Right, as far as it being used for a landfill, so the mayor, in trying to close budget gaps, said, "Well, we're gonna sell it to the state." But again, there was no formal agreement between the state of New York, specifically DEC and the city, that we were going to get $5 million. It was kind of this pulled-out-of-nowhere number, similar to red light cameras, so the $2 million for red light cameras, that didn't come from some sort of data-driven analysis of the system that was going to be in place. That came from a red light camera lobbyist, well documented, that it came from a lobbyist for, which ultimately, the company didn't win the bid, but for Redflex, which is one of the most notorious red light camera companies in the country.
Why notorious, why do you say?
Yeah, many of their leaders, their CEOs, or COOs, CFOs, are either in jail, were indicted, some level of criminal activity.
Just forced to make sure you don't go through the red light.
Yeah, especially in Chicago.
They won't see a red light for a while.
Yeah, right, right, especially in Chicago.
But it just proves that we have a relatively safe-driving city.
You know, well, yeah, it's interesting, because...
Because not everyone's on bicycles, like your person that sits next to you in the council, Leah Goldie.
Yes, yes, well, yeah, we do have a city that there are different means of transportation, and...
But you know, I mean, we are a safe city.
Well, look, when you look at the numbers...
Why do you say nothing, though? Alright, you say maybe, alright, it's not the fully expensive, nobody who's got caught?
Well, people have gotten caught, but the problem is, is that we still have to pay a bill to GATSO, which is the company that we've contracted with, to put up these cameras. And we lease them, right? Or they lease them to us. So we have fees to pay, associated with that.
Only after a certain point.
Right, so there, per camera, it's about, it's in like the $4,000 range, per camera, right? So it's only after that, after we pay that full amount of $4,000 per month, that we, as a city, can actually start making money. So, yeah, sure, people have been ticketed and given red light camera citations, but all of that money, 100% of it, has gone to GATSO.
For the fees.
Right, so they've gotten rich. We, I and some other members on the council have said this from the beginning, this is a way to line the pockets of a very wealthy company, in this case, GATSO, it happens throughout the country, there's no evidence, minimal evidence, that it improves traffic safety. And when you look at the data, of actually, how many people have been running red lights now, that we have cameras that capture it, people like Leah Goldie have clearly exaggerated the problem. There was this manufactured crisis, that there is this, that people are running red lights left and right, and it is this massive catastrophe going on, and the numbers don't flush it out.
You know, you're right, because, I mean, again, very unscientific, but I do drive this, you know, enough of the streets of Albany, I mean, how many lights do, you know, I stop in and go through.
Sure.
And, you know, you're right, I would almost say one every few months, I mean, not that it's scientific, but to say that, oh, everybody is going, and especially if you have a sign that, "Better look out," you know, then I'm sure it's even knocked down a little bit.
Absolutely, and so the reality is, is that it was, we were sold this idea that it's going to improve traffic safety, that we have this crisis of people running red lights, that's not true. And this way to balance the budget on red light cameras doesn't work either.
So, you know, basically, I mean, I have heard from some council, members of the council, that they're not sure when these lights are going to change, so they're not sure whether to speed up or slow down, and they're just not, you know, it makes them a little jittery going through the intersection. The other thing is, these cameras are 24 hours, 24/7, so if you're going at 3:00 in the morning, and, you know, you know that there's no one around, and you're looking, and you just want to go through, I mean, it's not a safety factor, it's just, you just do it, you know?
Right, right.
But, you know, you know it now, you just stop, and you know, well, you know, I had the police chief on the show here, and I said to him, "You must have tailed me to look at where my route is, because I think I go through every one of those intersections where there's a red light camera."
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I just, and I'm very cautious about stopping. The one that really bothers me is the one on Northern Boulevard by Memorial Hospital, because when you come down that slope, especially on a snowy day, icy day, you can't often stop.
That's correct.
And you kind of go into a slide, and you want to make a right on red, and it's like, that was a bad place, I think, for a red light camera.
I agree, and that, we raised that as an issue, some of us did that during our winter months, when the roads are in really rough condition, sometimes it is safer where you have to skirt a little bit, instead of doing a hard stop, to avoid an accident. And the response from the police department was, "Well, there's no instance of safely running a red light." Well, you know, look, the way it's defined in the law, in the New York State Vehicle and Traffic Law, is that if you go over the stop line, whether it's an inch, or a foot, or three feet, you just run the red light, you know? And the police chief and other members of the police department said, "Well, we're only going to ticket you if a police officer that was there on the scene, in his car or her car, saw you, and they would ticket you." Well, that's actually not the case, because many of the complaints that I've received about the red light camera system are rolling right on reds. So would, do I think that's something where the Albany Police Department would pull somebody over? No, I don't think so. But they're desperate for finding this, for making up for a lot of lost revenue.
See, I thought you were gonna say that they would say, "Well, tell it to the judge."
Yeah, well...
And then you, you know, you go to the judge, and you say, but you know, when you go to pay a fine, at least a parking fine, they say, "Oh, we'll cut it in half for you right here, if you don't have to go in front of the judge."
Sure.
And they automatically give you, instead of $40, that you have to pay $20, and you could pay it right there.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't buy that. And I go before, I say, "No, no, I'm gonna go, well, then you know you're risking the $20, you're risking you're gonna have to pay 40."
Right.
And I'm like, "Okay, and the judge isn't gonna like the fact that you're going before him and taking up his time."
Yeah, right.
And I went, "Well, okay, I'm gonna still do it."
Yeah, exactly, that's why the system is there.
You know, but that's what they do, they try to get you...
Yes, they, yes, absolutely.
I don't like the system.
Yeah, I know.
And you, both of us...
I don't either.
You're not a fan.
Next issue?
Well, so what's going on with the Queensland, with the Queensland's property?
We don't know yet. You know, we tried to get information from the mayor's office, and it's very difficult to get a straight answer out of the mayor's office, any answer out of the mayor's office. As it stands right now, we still have nothing, and we don't know what the, what the status is.
So, okay, so this Queensland's property thing might be in, the sale might be in the next budget, it might not be...
Could be, but it's not, you know, it's making up for lost revenue, it was already in the, I believe, 2015 budget.
So who chairs your environmental conservation committee?
So that would fall under the General Services Environment and Health Committee, that would be Mike O'Brien.
Okay.
Mike.
He could certainly dig deeper, and...
Sure, absolutely, he could. I know Mike is working very hard on how we address the looming crisis of solid, dealing with solid waste in the city right now. But the bottom line is, when you, we should not have to ask...
No, but can't you foil this information?
We, this is, so you're asking a very fundamental question, can I foil it? Yes. Should I, should I or anybody have to foil it? No. Why? Because that information, information like that should be pushed out in a proactive way to the public.
But what I'm saying is that, once you foil it, then you go to the TU, and you say to them, and you embarrass the mayor, and you say, "Oh, look, I had to foil this, now I got the information, here's the information," and then, you know, you look like the hero, and she looks, you know, and, you know, but it's, I find that it's the only way to get anything done in this city, is to bring the media into it.
I know, I know.
And it's a shame, but I've had that a few times, where in order to get something corrected, I had to go in the media.
It's true, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be like that.
I shouldn't have to do that.
Information should be pushed out in a proactive way.
There's no transparency in government.
No, no, there isn't. And, you know, we're talking about local government, right? You know, we're not dealing with matters of national security, you know, there's no reason to put up walls to information, none. Now, it might be politically embarrassing.
Right.
Fine, but the bottom line is that we are, as grassroots as you can get when it comes to governing, and information needs to be pushed out to as many people as possible, because I think when you have more people involved in the process, you get a better result.
Okay, so now you said overtime is another thing, fire department, you mentioned. What's wrong, I mean, you know, we have fewer people in the fire department, I don't know if they're at full employment in the fire department, they might be, but...
So there's, there's this, let's call it disconnect, between city employees and the administration. So you have 11 bargaining units, every single bargaining unit, and that includes the fire department, is without a contract.
Random, I don't know.
Yeah, and if you speak to any employee off the record, whether it's in the fire department, the police department, the blue-collar union, they are very concerned, and rightfully so, about the future that their job holds, or doesn't hold, in the city of Albany. So when you're sitting down with a group of employees trying to negotiate lower expenditures when it comes to anything, but let's just take overtime as an example, it's really hard to have an honest, good-faith conversation, when any other time you're trying to talk about the overall contract, you're getting stonewalled or ignored, right? So there is a lot of, I think, rightful cynicism with a lot of, if not the vast majority of city employees, because the mayor can sit down with these groups as much, these employees, as much as they want, but if they don't have the security of a contract, you know, a lot of that is, you know, whatever agreements come out of a meeting, nothing is set in stone until you have a contract. And so I think that's really the problem here, is that there's a, there's a real problem between...
Well, why aren't they giving you a contract, just because maybe they're gonna ask for a big raise, and then it'll break the city even more?
Well, that certainly, I wouldn't, I have no doubt about it, as part of it. Some bargaining units can make use of binding arbitration, that can be a double-edged sword, where, you know, an arbiter can say, you know, raise the amount of pay, but also increase the amount you're paying for health insurance, for example. Some other bargaining units don't have arbitration, they have fact-finding, where a neutral third-party weighs both sides, and then either side can disagree. And we saw that with the 911 dispatchers, where they wanted a very modest raise, some of our lowest-paid employees, but some of our most critical employees, the mayor's office said, "No, absolutely not, 0000," and the council stepped in and was able to force the mayor's hand, in giving them a very modest raise.
Can I ask you, I mean, because you've been in both houses of the state legislature, similar to my background also, but can you and those four or five other council members come together with, like, a people's budget?
It's, yeah.
And, you know, come forward and say, "This is how we would present a balanced budget?"
Sure, sure. We work, and when I say we, I mean myself, Councilman Commisso, Councilmember Robinson, Bailey, O'Brien, we've got great synergy, particularly between myself and Councilmember Commisso, we have just a phenomenal working relationship, professional relationship.
Good buds.
And, yeah, we're just solid, solid a team. And the challenging part is that when you have a council where you're deemed as a part-time employee, even though I can tell you right now, I can speak for myself, it is far from a part-time job, if you're doing it right, you have no dedicated staff of your own, even though our legislative aide is wonderful, our research council is wonderful...
No, but they're in the pockets of the majority also, they're not gonna go do the work, right?
Yeah, and they have to be careful, sure, they have to be careful as well.
So what I'm asking you, I mean, because, you know, Frank obviously has that accounting background.
Oh, yes.
You know, there's, he worked, you know, was with the state comptroller, was with the state comptroller.
Yeah, and now with the county comptroller.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, why can't, I mean, it seems like you guys could put together, you know, when Mark Robinson stands up and says, "Nothing has been given to the 5th Ward," and then, you know, you could put together a budget that would improve the 5th Ward, and improve other wards that he's concerned about, I mean, you could turn around and say, "This is the way the budget should look, and this is the way the city should be run, and you should come forth with some big plan, even though it's a part-time job." You, as a, as a, I don't want to say a minority group, but...
We are, we are, we're in effect a minority party, we're all Democrats, but the four or five of us are in effect, in effect, a minority party.
So you can come together with, like, a separate budget, and say, "This is the way it should look, not the way the mayor proposed it."
And, you know, we...
What would happen?
It would be voted down, first of all.
No, no, what would happen if you just, and then you laid it out for the media, at a news conference, and you said, you know, "Okay, here's, you know, the counter-budget," I guess is what we used to call the legislature, counter-budget.
Sure, and I don't know what the response would be from the media, I think that it would get, I would imagine, you know, a good response from the public, for sure, but, you know, we have tried elements of even making minor alterations to the budget. One example, one of the first things this mayor did was to pay for an outside group to reassess the entire city of Albany. Mike O'Brien said, "Why are we doing this right now? Let us instead take that money, hire a dedicated attorney who specializes in not-for-profit tax law, and let's see what we can do to get as much money as possible out of the for-profit operations going on at SUNY Poly." Very simple proposal, common sense proposal, the vast majority of the council said, "No," said, "Absolutely not."
Because the mayor didn't bless it.
No, of course, exactly. So we could do a more comprehensive approach, and a more full approach to offering an alternative budget, it'll, but what's amazing about...
I mean, here it is, that you worked within the system, you've tried working within this, now you're going to go on your own, and you're going to present the budget the way you feel it should be presented.
Well, you know, you know, I gotta tell you, Mark, because next year, we all know, is our reelection year, that is where we're going to have some changes. And I said it last night at our council meeting, what I'm gonna work for, very hard, is bringing change throughout this city, and working with, hopefully Frank will be running for mayor, and a host of council candidates, who will bring some meaningful change in the city once and for all. That is what I am going to be focused on next year, is making sure that we have people in office who actually are representing the people, and they who live here in the city of Albany, and not the wealthy and well-connected.
So you're going to run for reelection for your seat?
Yes.
And you said Frank will be running...
I hope.
Yeah, you're so good at friends with Frank, that's what I was gonna ask.
I hope, I don't know.
But he has a camp, I mean, I've already gotten some mailings from him, so...
Yep, he's, he has...
Raising money.
And he has outraised the mayor, he has outraised Carolyn McGlaughlin, significantly so.
You think Carolyn's gonna run for mayor, too?
I don't know, I think that it's been made pretty clear that Carolyn is very much has aligned herself with Mayor Sheen, I actually don't think that's going to be the case.
So who else do you think, besides Frank, would run for mayor?
I really, I really don't think we have, there's much of anyone else who would take a shot at an incumbent mayor here, because it is so difficult.
So, and you don't think Frank's father's giving him any advice on...
Oh, I'm, I mean, they're, they've got...
He's the majority leader of the county legislature.
Oh, sure, sure, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's advice.
County comptroller, so...
Yeah, I'm sure there's advice being given, but I'll tell you...
He's not listening.
Well, I'm sure he's listening.
I mean, you would think Frank would, Frank Senior would say, "Don't do that."
To run for mayor?
Against an incumbent.
I don't know, I don't know, I think that there's...
Because he loses his seat in the council.
Yeah, with potentially gaining the mayor's office.
Potentially.
We'll have to see, we've got some, we've got some, some work to do beforehand, to see if it's, you know, what the right path is to take. I do know that we can no longer have a common council that simply rubber stamps whatever the mayor wants, and whomever that mayor may be.
You know, you grew up in the Jeff Klein office in the Senate, and he's the chairman of the Independent Democratic Conference. Can you do something like that in the common council? Can you have a break-off?
Yeah, you could break away.
Can you? I mean, would you? Are you looking at the...
I've said before, back when we, when the council passed the trash tax, and then refused to repeal it, I said publicly to multiple media outlets that I would openly consider it.
Saying it here, yeah.
And it's still something that I think about, because as I said, we are in an effective minority party status, even though we're all quote-unquote Democrats in a 15-member body.
Right, but you can be an independent Democratic Conference, and...
Yes, you can, you can break away.
You could break away.
There's nothing in the rules that, that, that...
That don't allow it, yet.